Hi, buddy. How are you?
I'm gonna have to say testing. Testing.
Good evening. I would like to call Monday, May 28, 2024 meeting in order. Clerk Torrado, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link before this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat. We now ask that you provide your full name, address, topic you wish to speak on, as those are now required for all speakers at in-person council meetings and online. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input on a bill. My name is full name and I live at address and I would like to speak for or against this agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say that disrespectful, disruptive, rude speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and their actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we welcome Dr. Joe Font from Community Baptist Church for the invocation. Thank you so much for being with us.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we come before you tonight asking your blessing on this meeting. We pray that you would give wisdom, discernment, love, and justice, and that all would recognize that these qualities are personified in the person of Jesus Christ. We thank you that through him we find redemption, forgiveness of sins. We come to you by the command given to us in First Timothy, Chapter 2, that prayers and supplications, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for all who are in high positions, that we may lead a quiet, peaceable life, dignified in every way, seeing that this is good and pleasing in the sight of God our Savior. And so, as was already mentioned, I do pray that the proceedings this evening would be good, filled with peace and filled with life for all involved, as we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And then we can turn towards the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and its three colors, which expands, one nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. You may be seated. Clerk Torrado, would you please call the robe? Present.
Vice President Naskowski.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Present.
All nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has expected the minutes of the May 13, 2024, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I'll turn to the minute.
President McBride.
You want to read it? Thank you.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has expected the minutes of the June 12, 2023, the August 14, 2023, the May 13, I'm sorry, in the October 9, 2023, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. This recommendation for approval is made recognizing that three members of the council were not seated in 2023 and as such will be abstaining from any formal approval of old minutes.
Veteran council, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion that we accept the May 13, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
Make a motion, we accept August 14, 2023, June 12, 2023, and October 9, 2023 minutes.
Second. Been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. This time, we will have a special proclamation. Clerk Torrado.
A special proclamation awarded by the South Bend Common Council honoring this thing Joseph High School Boys Basketball Team.
All right. Thank you so much for being here and we welcome you and everyone who have come with you, your parents, teachers. So, we welcome you and would like to read a special proclamation. So, I'll turn it over to Pastor Lee.
Thank you, President McBride, and to all of the council members and to all of the parents and all of the players from the St. Joe High School Boys Basketball Team. It has been a pleasure and an honor to watch you young men represent the city of South Bend in such a positive way. And it was not our intent to be in a different location for this special proclamation, but we wanted to make sure before the seniors graduated that we, as a city, recognize the greatness that they have gone throughout the state representing our city. So, a special proclamation, 09-2024. And I will also be joined in this reading by our newest council member from the Second District, Phil U. Gooden Rogers. So, I'm gonna read the first five and then she'll read the first five. And we just all both realize that this writing is a little small. All right. "A special proclamation awarded by the South Bend Common Council honoring the St. Joe High School Boys Basketball Team. Whereas the St. Joe High School Boys Basketball Team has displayed extraordinary dedication, sportsmanship, and excellence in their athletic endeavors. And whereas through their hard work, perseverance, and team spirit, the St. Joe Huskies have distinguished themselves by achieving the impressive status of runner-up in the Boys' Basketball 3A State Championship. And whereas their remarkable season is a testament to the leadership of their coaches, the support of their families, the encouragement of their fans, and their commitment to excellence both on and off the court. And whereas the members of the St. Joe High School Boys Basketball Team has brought pride and positive recognition to our community, exemplifying the highest standards of athletic and academic achievements. And whereas this accomplishment highlights the outstanding efforts and achievements of student athletes who have balanced the rigors of academics with the demands of competitive sports."
Okay, I will continue. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, does hereby recognize and congratulate the St. Joe Husky Basketball Team for the exceptional performance and for being the runner-up in Indiana Boys Basketball 3A State Championship. And be it further resolved that we extend our heartfelt appreciation to the coaches, athletic staff, and all those who supported and contributed to the success of this remarkable team. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to the team and school to commemorate their outstanding achievement and to serve as a reminder of the pride they have brought to our community. In witness whereof, we have heretofore set our hand in council, the seal of the City of South Bend, to be affixed this 28th day of May, 2024. Sharon McBride, Council President and Third District Representative, South Bend Common Council."
Thank you. We also have all the other council. We also have the other council members who signed it as well. At this time, I would ask for the coaches and the whole team to come up in front so everyone can see you, the coaches, the team, the captains, and if there's any other staff, administrative staff. Please come up at this time. Any one of you who are gonna speak, if you can go up to the podium, please. The ones who are gonna speak, go up to the podium, please.
I got a coaching voice, I talk really loud.
I understand. I'm the coach, too.
First off, we just appreciate the council taking the time to acknowledge these young men and my coaching staff. As you guys probably aware, a lot of hours of unseen work goes into what we do. And to get these guys a little bit more recognition means a lot to us as coaches. And we're really proud to represent South Bend. And I thought these guys did a great job representing what we believe is important to our community. And again, thank you so much. We won't take any more time. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Are there any captains that would like to speak? Any captains want to say any encouraging words to your teammates? Oh, nice. I love it.
As a captain and a senior, just know all you underclassmen have been left in really good hands with the coaches and the leadership of our seniors. The expectation is now a state championship, and I'm looking forward to see you guys do that next year.
At this time, we would also like to acknowledge and recognize the parents. If you are here, would you please stand at this time? We appreciate your level of commitment and support that you also bring to the table and instill to the young men to be better men and not just on the basketball court, but off the court as well. Thank you for everything that you've done for our community. Congratulations. And at this time, we will come around, we will come around and take a picture with you all. And also knowing that we have proclamations, and I would ask, Coach, if you would let us know how many proclamations we would like to give to every individual and your coaching staff, so as many of you need, we can get copies for you. So, 16, we got it. Thank you so much. We'll come and take some pictures and then we won't bore you unless you would like to stay and learn more about local government, but you better make your exodus right after we take pictures. Thank you so much. The Common Council is now back in session. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve to the Committee of the Whole. Said, move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
Good evening. The Committee of the Whole is now in session, and this is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and a public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Torrado, would you please give substitute bill 20-24 a second reading?
Chair, I'd like to accept the substitute bill.
I'm so sorry, yes. All right, there's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torrado, please call the robe.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine aye.
All right, Clerk Torrado, would you please give substitute bill 20-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 18, Article 5, to update the procedures for vacation of public ways and public places.
All right, is there a, is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. A substitute bill 2024 was heard in Public Works and Property Vacation and was given a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
All right, we see that the petitioner's present. I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening. Chris Dussel, CS South Bend Department of Community Investment, offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. I am here tonight. Appreciate your time to present what we're calling an improvement to the right-of-way vacation process for the city of South Bend. And I have a brief presentation, and with me tonight is Jenna Thro from Legal Department. We can help answer any questions at the end of that presentation. So, our topics today, simply just talking about concerns with the current right-of-way vacation process, and then the proposed improvements to the vacation process through this ordinance, and then some next steps. So, real quick, the current process, the way it stands now, the petitioner, the applicant, comes to the Engineering Office, Department of Public Works, to submit an application, and that application is prepared to be heard by the Board of Public Works. And the Board of Public Works makes a recommendation. That recommendation, then, is back in the hands of the applicant, who then needs to petition through the clerk's office to get the item in front of the Common Council, where a hearing is held and a final decision is made. And if we take a quick look at that process, I think we're just trying to point out some things that we think could use improvement, and particularly the things that aren't existent now. So, there is no pre-filing or engagement process, just to entertain, engage, educate the potential petitioner, the potential applicant. There is no established review criteria based on sort of when you're reviewing each of these requests. There's nothing to weigh it against. There is no review fee. There is no expiration for the Board of Public Works recommendation. And we've had some cases, I know, that the councils had to see requests that have been a year old or more. And then, there's currently no request, no requirement for signatures, or actually, there's some cases where the entire block does not get notified. Currently, the radius is 150 feet, but for those atypical block shapes, that doesn't reach everyone in the block. And then, on top of that, there's some cases where signatures are not required from those that are adjacent to the requested area. Also, there's a lack of public hearing staff support. Again, that relates very strongly to council, where there's been occasions where petitioners have been here, sometimes without the proper context, context or understanding prior to their appearance. And sometimes, there's been a lack of submitting notice to all the appropriate departments. So, that's what we're looking at with the current ordinance. But I do want to note that this is still petitioner-driven. It's not automated. So, the petitioner must really decide on the pace and the actions to bring these to council. So, a quick summary of what the proposed ordinance can bring. We would add a initial section that's for pre-application review and consultation. We call it ALIs 101. So, it's an opportunity before there's anything, any formal steps taken by the applicant, where they can speak with city staff just to get an understanding of what the full ALI request entertains and get some early comments or feedback on the nature of their request, and if it's something that could be favorably viewed in a part of the future steps. So, there's also an opportunity to add formal criteria, which has not existed prior to this. Where, per the ordinance, we're suggesting that evaluation criteria be set by the Board of Public Works. And there's some sample criteria there, just sort of some basic review questions to help understand the impact of the vacation request. So, the second piece is the actual Board of Public Works review and recommendation. There is a $300 fee for staff processing. This would be in addition to an existing $150 publication fee. Just to note that the typical ALI vacation, or right-of-way vacation, requires up to eight staff members, about a combined four hours per request. Also, updated language to reflect the changes to the criteria, the process, and responsibilities. And then, finally, setting a 90-day expiration date for requests. So, once the Board of Public Works makes a recommendation, and then notification sent to the applicant, they've got 90 days to file a petition with the clerk's office. And the third piece is just the clerk filing and the council hearing and decision process. We want to ensure that the request that's coming to the clerk's office is indeed the same request that was recommended by the Board of Public Works. There's no change to the legal description or any other aspect that would make those two inconsistent. Full block notification, so it's no longer 150-foot radius requirement, making sure that the entire block within the right-of-way in question is notified. And then, signatures would be necessary from all the adjacent property owners. And when it comes to the council portion, we want to make sure that there is a staff person present to accompany all of the vacation requests as they make it to the council's hearing process. And then, finally, make sure there's notification of the results to all the applicable city departments. So, what does a new process look like? You would have this new section, ALIs 101, that's what we're calling it informally, where you have an intake through a pre-application system, where these individuals will have a chance to talk to staff, sort of understand the nature of the request, the whole process, and get a sense of the, where their request stands. Now, I want to be absolutely clear that this is a process that's in place for whether this first review results in sort of a commentary or feedback that's favorable or unfavorable. Still, the request is independent to the filer and to the petitioner, and we're not, we are accompanying in either eventuality. It's not one or the other, so for us. So, we have that phase, the second phase, with Board of Public Works review. It's similar to what's there now. I think the big change there is the 90-day limit, making sure that the requests are consistent and making sure that the applicant is assisted through staff in providing all of the pieces that make up the ultimate vacation packet. So, that's a list of addresses, a radius, the legal description, and so on. And then, finally, again, the staff would be, city staff would be attending applicants along the hearing route, and city departments are notified at the end. So, just the wrap-up is, where does that leave us? So, we have, we've been through the current ordinance, where we stand, and here's what we would achieve with this ordinance proposal. We would be able to gain that pre-filing section, review criteria, adding review fee, an expiration of the Board of Public Works deadline, post filing verification, notification of the entire block, and signatures required from the adjacent property owners, a public hearing, staff support, and notification to applicable departments, applicable departments. And then, just recognize that there's no change to the bottom line. It's still a petitioner-driven process, and they still work through this independently of all those that they're consulting with through the process. So, looking forward, just the next steps. We'll be going back to the Board of Public Works and starting to work on their role in this ordinance and developing and finalizing those criteria, and then preparing the variety of materials that we have out there now, be printed materials, online materials, applications, and then going through with the staff roles and responsibilities to make sure that we're streamlined and ready to go for August 1st, when will be the effective date for the ordinance. Happy to answer questions that you have. Thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Yes. Vice President Naskowski?
Thank you, Chair. We talked about this during some of the meetings, but I just want to be clear, as far as a contact person, because as you know, that's always been a challenge for us when a property vacation is in front of us and there's no one from staff when we have questions. So, will there be a dedicated person for that, or will it just be whoever has reviewed that information will be who, you know, shows up here for questions that we may have? information will be who, you know, shows up here for questions that we may have in reference to, it could be the recommendation, or whatever it could be?
We believe there'd be a singular contact. It may not always be the person that's attending the hearing, but there'll be a shared understanding of each of these requests, for sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
I just have one question. You had mentioned that this is going to affect August 1st.
Yes.
Would we have, or would the Board of Public Works have established an evaluation tool, and would that come back to the council?
Yes, it's our intent to have the criteria established by the time we want to share that back with the council. Be happy to share that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Dressler, I would just like to ask, what happens if ALIs vacated and the petitioner doesn't follow through, or no further progress happens?
At what stage?
You know, they pay the money, they get it vacated, but they don't do anything with it, or is, for future residents, or is there a way that the city can, what, take it back, or, 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 once it's vacated, it's vacated?
So a scenario where the council hears the request and it's granted?
Mm-hmm.
They have an expiration date on that?
Yes, so. So, there could potentially be a scenario where, once the applicant acquires the property that's part of the vacation petition request, there may be a situation where maybe they don't pay a property tax for that. And perhaps the portion of the property that's become theirs, through the vacation process, may end up through the cash flow process, or something along those lines. But, that might be, it's probably a dynamic case-by-case basis, depending on the circumstances of what happens to that city. Once the, once the city agrees that that portion of the right-of-way now belongs to the joint manor person.
Okay. That was just a question. Any other questions from any other council members? All right. Now, what we'll do, we'll go to the public portion. Clerk Torado, is anyone in, online, or in, I want to say chambers?
I do not see anyone online or from the public that's wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone that was looking to speak in opposition, online, or?
I do not see anyone online or in the public that's wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
All right. At this point, the public hearing is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to substitute Bill 2024 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
All right. So, Bill 20-24, we go for the full council with favorable recommendation. Clerk Torado, could you please give Bill 22-24 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, alley at 513 North Hill Street, beginning at a point in the west line of Hill Street, degrees right west, said point being a distance of 198.12 degrees, northerly of the north lane of Cedar Street, 82 degrees right west, also the point being the northeast corner of Parcell Bearing Street, St. Joseph County, index number 018-008-019.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 22-24 was heard in the public works, property vacation committee this afternoon, and was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
All right. We see that the petitioner is present. I expect you to state your name and address, and share with us key points regarding the bill this before us.
Is the green light on?
Hold it. Then you go.
Okay. Good.
My name is.
I think it's going there. Is it the battery?
Here.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
My name is Andrew Cunningham, with Jones Peter Rafensky at 325 South Lafayette Boulevard, here representing the University of Notre Dame, for the ALI vacation. We're the Velvin Family Psychology Clinic. And just to give a bit of background on the coordination items, to give you kind of a location, we're located here to the north of downtown, just north of Cedar Street, at the intersection of Cedar and Hill Streets, and further north, South Bend Avenue. Boxed in red is the project's location, and that blue stripe is where we're proposing to vacate the alley. Of course, the ALI vacation will facilitate the construction of the psychology clinic, allowing mental health services here within the heart of the South Bend community, and also give collaboration space to students and faculty to provide further research, making strides into mental health care services throughout the country. Just pulling up the next slide, looking at the existing conditions. This is the topographic survey we prepared. Currently, there is an existing structure located at the intersection of Hill and Cedar Streets. Just to the north is a small parking lot. As you'll see on the next slide, we're proposing to push further north with a larger facility and expand parking. But what we've outlined here, shaded in blue, is the existing alley that's proposed to be vacated, running east and west across the property. There are a couple of photographs there. On the left-hand side, you can see a drive accesses the alley from Hill Streets, and runs all the way across from east to west, and abuts to an existing vacated alley there on the west side. Currently, the City of South Bend does have a combined sewer that traverses east to west through this alley. AEP also owns lateral transmission lines running east and west. The property to the north also utilizes this alley to access it from the Hill Street Drive, all the way across to the west side, and go north up to their property to access cell On the next slide, we've outlined the proposed conditions, and the coordination that's been done. So you can see that left-hand side is the proposed site plan, with the new psychology clinic located there at the intersection of Hill and Cedar. To the north, we have that expanded parking to serve the facility. We are proposing to close the entrance drive off of Hill Streets to facilitate a safe, kind of redesigned and reconstruct intersection at the South Bend Avenue and Hill Streets intersection. We have coordinated extensively with the Public Works Department to make sure that the psychology clinic, and the Notre Dame Trail, and Hill Street improvements all align and work together to provide kind of a symbiotic relationship with the widened sidewalk, the pedestrian plaza, and a safer intersection there with the vacated alley. The diagram on the right-hand side of the page depicts two items. One, the kind of that beige outline, dashed outline, represents the access easement for the property to the north. They'll be able to utilize the proposed driveway located off of Cedar Streets, running along the west-hand side. They'll use that to access all the way up to the northwest corner of the site and access their property. The blue outline, there, running east and west, outlining that alley, is a proposed access and maintenance easement for the City of South Bend and the utility service providers, so that the city can maintain the combined sewer that currently traverses through the alley, and AEP can also maintain the transmission lines. Thank you for consideration.
Council members, do you have any questions at this time? If not, Troy Warner?
There's a cell phone tower that sits to the north there. Does that, I know they've got street access there, they also need access from the, would be the west side then?
Yes, exactly. That's kind of what I was describing there with that property to the north, that's the cell tower property. So right now, they use that alley to come off of Hill Streets, go to the west side, and then go north. So what we're allowing them to do is use our driveway and go all the way up to that corner, and then cut across and kind of...
So still have the access.
So still have the access, exactly.
Mr. Sexton here from Notre Dame. If you would like to add any additional comments before any other council members, or we go to the public portion of it?
Tim Sexton, University of Notre Dame, with offices on the fourth floor of the main building there. Andrew did a great job of going through the concept here of what we're looking to do. I did want to just make reference to the Velvin Family Psychology Clinic. You know, what we're hoping to do is grow the availability of mental health care in the South Bend area, focusing specifically in three areas: trauma care, suicide prevention, and substance use. And what we're hoping that over time, in this building here, we'll be serving close to 1,500 individuals on an annual basis. That'll be when it's in full capacity, but that's our goal. The services that are going to be provided are going to be provided to the most vulnerable people in our population. And one of the great avenues that we're going to try to go down here is, again, education and bringing more people into the mental health area, graduate students, for example, that might not have been an interest in this area. Here would be an opportunity for them to get engaged. And by building the number of providers, obviously, we're addressing the dramatic need that's in existence today. That's all I have to say, but I'd be happy to answer any additional questions with Andrew.
Any other council members? At this time, we'll now go to the public portion. Clerk Torado, is there anyone in the chambers and/or online that would like to speak in favor of this bill?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone in the chambers or online that would like to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
At this point, the public hearing portion of this bill is now over. I will, any other questions, any comments, anyone would like to make? All right. We will now, I'll now entertain a vote, a motion, sorry.
I move that we send Bill 22-24 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Torado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Bill 22-24 will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
I will now entertain, I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole.
Second.
All right. Clerk Torado, please call the roll.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes.
The full council is now back in session. This is the portion where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding the bills that were just heard in the committee of the whole. Clerk Torado, will you please give substitute Bill 20-24 a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common counsel of the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Substitute Bill 20-24 was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill 20-24.
Move or pass.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Torado, the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
Aye.
All nine.
Bill 20-24 has been adopted. Clerk Torado, will you please give Bill 20-22-24 a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, alley at 513 North Hill Street, beginning at a point in the west line of Hill Street, 66 degrees right west, said point being a distance of 198.12 degrees, northerly of the north line of Cedar Street, 82 degrees right west, also the point being the northeast corner of Parcell Bearing, St. Joseph County, index number 018-5008-019.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 22-24?
Yes, Bill 22-24 was heard in the committee of the whole, and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 22-24.
Second.
Moving second. Clerk Torado, the roll, please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Naskowski.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
All nine.
Thank you. Bill 22-24 has been adopted. Resolutions, this is the portion of the council meeting where common counsel hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. During the public portion of each resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, residential address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill if necessary. Clerk Torado, will you please give Resolution 24-17 a reading?
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 728 Harrison Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46616, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Cross Community Incorporated.
Thank you. Presenter, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mark Bemter, for Manager of Business Development within the Department of Community Investment with the city of South Bend, with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. I have a small PowerPoint. I will pull up in just a few seconds.
President McBride, as he's doing that, I would just note that the bill was heard earlier this evening in the Community Investment Committee, and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you for that report.
Very well.
Appreciate that.
So, Bill number 2417, as was mentioned, is a confirming resolution for a five-year single-family residential real property tax abatement for property located at 728 Harrison Avenue. The designated resolution was discussed during the meeting on May 13th, and with your consideration today, this abatement will provide a tax savings for a future homeowner, a new development to be located at 728 Harrison. So, the petitioner is Cross Community Incorporated, which is an organization which provides home ownership education classes for first-time homebuyers, and they're planning to invest $270,000 into the development of a new two-story, excuse me, ranch-style house on a currently vacant lot. This house will have around 1,500 square feet, include three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a garage. The inevitable beneficiary of the abatement will be a future homeowner that has participated in one of the homeownership programs through Cross Community. So, this slide provides a breakdown of the abatement impact on the estimated new property taxes. Current taxes on the property are a little under $150, with it being currently a vacant lot, but they are expected to increase to $2,600 once the development is complete, and assumes an assessed value of $220,000. During the five-year abatement, total taxes are estimated to come to a little over $13,000. Of that, roughly $7,600 would be abated, and with $5,600 in new taxes paid. So this slide provides a further breakdown of the impact of the... in one of the homeownership programs through Cross Community. So, this slide provides a breakdown of the abatement impact on the estimated new property taxes. Current taxes on the property are a little under $150, with it being currently a vacant lot, but they are expected to increase to $2,600 once the development is complete and assumes an assessed value of $220,000. During the five-year abatement, total taxes are estimated to come to a little over $13,000. Of that, roughly $7,600 would be abated, with $5,600 in new taxes paid. So this slide provides a further breakdown of the impact of the abatement with the estimated annual taxes. Happy to answer any question. And Tina Patton of Cross Community is here as well to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Do you have any comments you would like to make?
Tina Patton, President of Cross Community, office is located at 707 Sherman Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. The only thing I would like to add is that Cross Community continues to educate individuals in regard to their financial responsibilities in regard to owning their home, and we are just really excited about the support that we've been given in regard to allowing homeowners to actually have homes and how we are able to make the homes more affordable for them. So, we just really appreciate your support here tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask council if you have any questions of the sponsor or the petitioner of the bill? If not, I will turn to the public to see if there's anyone in present who's wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 2417 or online.
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Thank you. I will turn to the same said to see if there's anyone present or online wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution 2417.
I do not see anyone from the public or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
Thank you. With that being said, the public portion is now closed. I will turn to council. Are there any comments?
Again, I would just like to thank you, continually thank you for all of what you are doing to help develop the whole area and your willingness to bring dreams to people who are looking forward to having homeownership. So I appreciate what you are doing, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Vice President White?
Yes. I would also like to echo those words as well. What you have, first, your vision that you and your husband has had in regards to Cross Community and is now coming into fruition, and it's so exciting to see what is happening in that particular neighborhood when, for years, a lot of things did not happen. So I really appreciate that as well. But I would like to take that further. Your commitment for wealth creation moves way beyond Cross Community because Mrs. Patton is out in the community, you know, with workshops and sharing information regards to how individuals can begin to build wealth, generational wealth, but most important, how to save and to prepare to purchase a home. So, thank you so much.
And if I might add, councilwoman, we have at Cross Community, we have trained over 125 individuals in this community in regard to financial literacy, particularly as it relates to homeownership. And so we are really excited about that number.
That's good. Great. Councilor Lee?
I would like to say, as this is in the first district, we strongly support it. Again, a lot of people talk about tax abatements and all of that, but it is these opportunities that gives the developers the opportunity to make it affordable for a person to be a homeowner. And it's important. Started homes are great. They're a great way to start building generational wealth. And so, the education part and with being able to, a piece of land that's only given the city $150 and eventually will be $2,600 and a home in a developed area that was blighted. Thank you. Thank you again, and we're so excited to be, that this is happening in the first district. We're very much supportive. So I speak very highly and I support it.
Thank you.
Councilor Bowden Simpson?
Want you to know that I took the opportunity to fly down here. Just beautiful. Beautiful, and I saw a gentleman sitting on the steps of 726. And this is really beautiful, and we really thank you for what you're doing for our community.
Thank you so much.
Councilor Gooden Rogers?
Yes, Ms. Patton, can you tell us how many homes this just make right here?
This will be the fifth home.
Thank you.
This will be the fifth new construction. Cross Community is also now getting into rehabs because as we find that the new homes are on the neighborhood, it's in the same location, we're also finding that we want to, the houses that are dilapidated, we want to make sure that those also look brand-new as well. And so now we're getting into rehabs also.
Great, thank you.
They are absolutely beautiful.
Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations. At this time, council, what's your pleasure?
I move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto?
Councilmember Dr. Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
All nine.
Resolution 2417 has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to bills on first reading. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 23-24 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 620 South St. Joseph Street, Council Manic District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 23-24 to the South Bend Plan Commission for June 17th and then to ZNA for public hearing and third reading on June 24th. Second. Second. It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 24-24 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 718, 724, and 730, Turnock Street, Council Manic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 24-24 to the South Bend Plan Commission for June 17th, then to ZNA for public hearing and third reading on June 24th. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 25-24 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 215 West Marion Street, 502, 506, 530 North Lafayette Boulevard, and vacant lot north of 506 North Lafayette Boulevard, Council Manic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 25-24 to South Bend Plan Commission for June 17th, then to council for ZNA and public hearing and third reading for June 24th. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. At this time, we will turn to any unfinished business. Any unfinished council business at this time? Same said, is there any new business?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
On this coming week, I would like to call, I'll meet with the members of the ZNA and Annexation Committee and probably reaching out to you so we can look at some upcoming discussions. And there's some neighborhood issues and neighborhood plans I'd like for us to reach out by this coming Thursday. I should have reached out everybody on the committee and talked to everybody to see what topic we need. If your schedule on Tuesday or Wednesday is available, please let me know. Hopefully you can figure that out very soon so I can let the clerk's office know. Also, for a new business, I would like to request, I know you all have met in the past, but I would like for our council to meet, I don't know if it's in Rules Committee or whatever committee, my parliamentarian or president could let us know, but I would like for us to discuss our privilege of the floor. I would rather us to look at rules regarding our privilege of the floor. I know in the past years when I was on the council, people, it was done differently, and I would like to just get some understanding of that. I know there are new members here, but in taking some time to observe the privilege of the floor over the last five months, just like for us to have a open dialogue about best practices regarding that, of what can be done according to our, I know the rules that we have already put in play. Also, looking at any freedom of the press, First Amendment, and gotta go along with decorum and everything else. I really would like for us to tone our privilege of the floor up in a way that people can express their concerns and at the same time, we can also be respected. And so, we can have a good ebb and flow with that. And in our next meeting, or even if we need to meet prior to our next meeting, I think that is important for us to discuss because I always, in past years, looked forward to the privilege of the floor, to hear different ideas. Sometimes, they gave me ideas to do or things I haven't done, or they were celebrations or whatever. And I think we are at a place personally, I do recognize not only some situations in our most recent meeting, but even in other meetings. And I think even, we had a meeting earlier where the administration took part, a person was making comments, and the administration took part in responding, which I thought was totally different from what I've been used to. So, I really would like for us to review our state codes, our council codes regarding our privilege of the floor to give us some understanding of that. And I would like for us to have a council meeting so we could discuss that and whether that be in the Rules Committee or whatever you would suggest, I'm fully open to that.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I will follow up with parliamentarian. I know that I have been, along with the leadership and rules, have been looking at some of the best practices, and there are some, for instance, the county council, you cannot speak on items. You can only speak on items that are on the agenda, and there are some that you cannot speak of items on the agenda, and then there are some that you cannot speak unless you have the topic in advance of what you're speaking on. So there's various ways that we can look at best practices with, but looking at the integrity of our meetings because that's what we have Rules Committees for, because if you have any complaints, that's what, you formally can file those as well. So yes, since you are asking to be included in those, I will speak with our attorney to see if we need to set that up or if it can't be set up in an executive session or how we will go about that. So I will follow up after this meeting.
And if it's a decision to set it up in an executive session for any reason, I still think that our public needs to be aware of what to do because of the fact that it is the public comment.
I totally agree. I'm just following up so I can get the right clarification for you.
And the administration too, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee was first, I'm sorry.
Oh yeah, that's okay. I just wanted to remind members of the Health and Public Safety Committee and the Information and Technology Committee and to invite members of the public and the rest of the council to a joint Health and Public Safety and IT Committee meeting this Thursday, May 30th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. in person at the Technology Resource Center, and it's, the meeting is also available virtually through the Teams link. The topics will be an update on public safety technologies that will include our real-time crime center, residential and business camera program, our FLOC license plate readers, and an update on the South Bend Police Transparency Hub. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lee?
Yes, I would just want to remind everyone, Thursday is going to be a very, very, very busy day for all of us because at 6:00 at the Brown Learning Center, there will be a discussion regarding Portage and Elwood and the visioning process for that. So for individuals who would like to be a part of those discussions, that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Brown Learning Center. The address escapes me, but I know it's on Beale Street. And then there'll be another discussion Wednesday, June 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Measal School, where again, as we're envisioning what's going to happen, I grew up in that area. I remember when Portage and Elwood was a very vibrant place, and it is my mission to get it back to that state, but it can't just be my mission, it has to be all of us in the first district. So if you want to see some positive change, it takes getting involved, and so I want to invite you to those meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to report that on June 1st, District 2 is having its second cleanup. We will be cleaning up at 9:00 a.m. We'll be on the corner of Huey and Humboldt. Come on out. I see this room is full. Looked like a lot of able-bodied in here. So I'm asking you to come on out and join us for our cleanup. We had one on May 18th, and we had about 10 people, and we filled up about, I'd say about 15 bags. So come on out and join us, June 1st.
Thank you. With that being said, we'll turn to the privilege of the floor. Individuals who wish to address the council must take their name and residential address and have provided the topic of the meeting before this portion to the clerk's office. The maximum time limit for this portion shall be a total of 30 minutes with a limited to three minutes per the individual. The council president may assign a topic raised by the person during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the administration for review of the topics assigned and shall be responded to by the next scheduled council meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Crumlish, a resident of South Bend and a local business owner with an office at 3215 Sugar Maple Business Court, South Bend. I am here tonight as the president of Businesses United for Incorporated. We are a corporation representing over 20 South Bend businesses and still growing. We are seeking fairness for the truly homeless in our community as well as greater fiscal responsibility from our local government and also fairness and freedom for all media platforms to share and report on the actions of our government. All this is transparent for the genuine improvement of the city of South Bend. At the close of the last city council meeting, Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski assaulted a legitimately credentialed member of the media after he had addressed the council earlier that evening, asking questions about local government contracting procedures. This was a fair inquiry from any citizen, businessperson, member of the media. His questions were badgered back by Councilwoman Niskoski with belittling comments in an attempt to avoid his questions. Her contempt for the public speaker, Logan Foster, was reprehensible and a violation of all public procedural decency. No public speaker should be cross-examined for asking an open, honest line of questions during privilege of the floor. And Councilwoman Niskoski's subsequent assault on Logan was simply appalling. I am joined here with several business representatives and many concerned citizens from the community. We are here to ask Councilwoman Niskoski to immediately resign her position on this elected board of city officials.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Clerk Toronto?
Sarah Foster, 1138 College Street. On Monday, May 13th, I watched Vice President Sheila Niskoski assault and attempt battery on my husband, Logan Foster. Vice President Niskoski's assault has left my family living in fear because if she could assault a citizen inside of the council chambers, what is she capable of doing outside of the chambers? Additionally, the footage of Vice President Niskoski's assault and attempted battery on my husband has over 19,000 views across multiple social media platforms. The citizens of South Bend deserve better leadership, and that is why I and 178 members of the public have signed a petition, petition calling for Vice President Niskoski's resignation.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak under privilege of the floor before we go to our online individuals? Peggy Fox... Peggy Foster, will you please unmute yourself and state your name and address?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Just one, I'm having a little technical issue here. Here we go.
We are not able to hear your comment.
She's muted.
No, we're here. She's muted on her end.
It's on her end. I, I have it now, thank you.
She's muted on her, can, you have it muted on your hand.
She can't hear you.
Are you able to hear me?
This is, this is the mic.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
She can't hear you.
I'm not sure why I'm muted.
Which button?
Do you have it here me now?
Does it come through?
Okay, okay, thank you.
She'll need to type out her.
Unfortunately, we do not have any, um, audio input online. We apologize, so please type out your comment, and we will put that on the record.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else?
I do not see anyone else wishing to speak under privilege on the floor, online or in public.
Raise your hand. Thank you. With that being said, this meeting stands adjourned. Good night.